Okay, at six o'clock on December the 7th, I'd like to call the commission meeting for the Cleveland County Commissioners to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to do our pledge of allegiance and invocation at this time? Steve?
I'm glad to, Mr. Sir, thank you.
Thank you. Let's stand.
To join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the flag and for what it stands for. We thank you especially for today, as we recognize Pearl Harbor Day, the day that is living in infamy in our lives, because we will never forget World War II. Thank you for blessing this country as you have since then, and we ask your blessings on this meeting tonight and moving forward as we continue to do the best we can for freedom in the United States and in Cleveland County, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thanks, Steve. At this time, I'd like to recognize any elected officials that are with us tonight. No one?
No.
Oh. Thank you, Randy. Thank you for being here. Any veterans that are with us tonight, would you stand and be recognized on this 80th anniversary? Would you introduce yourself, Tanze?
Oh, I'm Tanze Farrell Wallace, United States Air Force.
Thank you for your service.
I'm Steve Peddick, U.S. Army.
Jason Paul, United States Air Force.
Thank you.
Ms. Wallace, do you have one of our veterans pants?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all for your service. Any law enforcement?
Danny, House, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for being here, Danny. And county department heads, would you recognize yourself, please?
Martha Thompson, Deputy County Attorney.
Stephen Edition, Solwater Constable.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Attorney.
Chris Martin, Plague and Halls.
Josh Davis, Tom Westerfus.
Allison Williams, Resources.
Lucas Jackson, Vine.
Jason Paul, District Governor.
Thank you all for being here, and we appreciate all you do. I want to give notice that we are postponing the three public hearings originally scheduled for the December 7th, 2021 Commissioners Meeting regarding small business incentive grants for B&amp;S Butler Properties, Thoroughbred Partners Limited, and White Investments and Shelby LLC. The public hearings are reset for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Commissioners Chambers. And next, I would like to ask if anyone, is there any items to be added to the agenda or change the agenda in any way?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to postpone the selection of the Chair and Vice Chair until the December 20th, 2021 Commissioners Meeting at 10:30 AM in the Commissioners Chambers, since we are meeting all of our Commissioners.
So have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. Johnny's not here tonight. One of his family members is sick, and he would appreciate your prayers. So at this time, we're going to move on to the citizens' recognition portion. I'm going to ask the clerk to read them.
The citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the Commission to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. The Board is interested in hearing citizen concerns. Guest speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency.
All right, first, I have Glenda. Green, is that your last? Thank you, Glenda.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman, all members. Excuse my appearance. I've been in Raleigh since Sunday, just drove home, so did another couple, to make it to this meeting. But I thought y'all needed to know something. We have a young lady here tonight named Mallory Thompson. And Mallory won in the discussion meet in Raleigh this week, and she won a Polaris Ranger ride, Mallory, in a discussion group, and you can go on Facebook under Farm Bureau, and I wish you would and listen to her discussion. She was fantastic, and she will represent the state of North Carolina in, I believe, Atlanta, correct? In January, February 1, and if she does as well as she did then, she will win for North Carolina. I just wanted y'all to know, I knew she would not brag on herself, and we've just accomplished, she's just accomplished that this weekend. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mallory.
Can you stand up so we can see you?
Randy McDaniel.
Hello again. I'm Randy McDaniel. I'm a farm in the southern end of the county. I'm glad I could come up tonight. And I wanted to talk a little bit about working together with this land use map that we're, that's going to be voted on sometime or another. I, along with Glenda and Randall, had been to the Farm Bureau Annual Meeting this week. Got a little pumped up. The Governor and Agriculture Commissioner and Treasurer all spoke in how much they looked at agriculture, how much agriculture was a part of North Carolina. And along with that, it's a part of Cleveland County, a big part of Cleveland County, huge part of North Carolina. I know this land use thing is something that's got to be done, but I would like to say that if we all work together, I think we can come up with something that's a little better. Now, the Farm Bureau is an advocate for the farmers in Raleigh, well, in the county, in Raleigh and in Washington. Sometimes I feel like we might could do a little bit more between the two with the Commissioners and the county and the Farm Bureau to get our views on stuff like this. But in 2001, the Commissioners voted and approved a farm land preservation program. And then this farm land preservation program was supposed to have been a deal in it that when you bought property close to an ag district or the farm land preservation district, the person buying the property or the house would be told and sign the paper that they were buying near or in a ag district. And that way, if there was any problems down the road with males running tractors at night, they could always say, well, you knew that when you bought them. For some reason or another, the attorney at that time discontinued that. Said it didn't need to be done. So they voted on the farm land preservation thing, but they did not vote to do that particular thing. I would like to see that put back, like see that in and voted on. The other thing is, is whatever map y'all decide to go with on this farm use thing, there is an overlay with the farm land preservation. I've got copies here if anybody wants to see it right now. It's overlay of the people that's participating in the farm land preservation. And I would like for y'all to consider using, having that map to be used along with the map, whatever voted on, and then you can specifically see which area is actively farming in this area. If y'all would do that, I'd appreciate it very much, and appreciate you listening to me, and have a good night.
Thank you, Randy. Can we have those?
Can we have a copy?
Mallory Thompson.
I want to push the button. Hi, I'm Mallory Thompson. I live at 587 Oak Grove, Cloverhill Church Road in Lawndale, 28090. And first night, I'd just like to thank you guys for the agricultural proclamation that you presented to the ag community last November 16th meeting. That proclamation recognized the important role that agriculture plays in Cleveland County's industry sector, bringing in $130 million in economical dollars, that that farming community are the stewards of our land, which our future generations depend upon, and that our farming community also carries our county's heritage in the farmland and fosters a sense of our community pride. Land is a farmer's most valuable asset, and yet the most dependable variable that we have in a year's time. I shared last meeting that over the next 20 years, 40% of our ag land will transition to other use. Today, I stand before you with farmers behind me with the concern of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Our ag community is concerned with the second, with the expansion of the secondary growth area and the reduction of the rural preservation zone. The secondary growth area is home to some of Cleveland County's prime agricultural land and is a unique industry, we are a unique industry, in which our operation is limited by the good quality soil and the ability for us to work on that land in an efficient amount of time. Once land is developed into a residential neighborhood or industrial park, commercial production, agriculture becomes a story of the past. To keep agricultural community, economic, economic community strong, we hope that you guys will consider the agricultural community's proposal of incorporating the map of the prime commercial land or taking in the consideration of present use value or voluntary ag districts. The Ag Advisory Board has also supported or submitted a supporting recommendation that asks that when a proposal is presented to the county Commissioners for development of land, that the county will be notified, that the Commissioners will notify local agricultural support staff, including the agricultural liaison to the Advisory Board for feedback concerning any proposed policy changes that could impact production agriculture and the agricultural economy, and to, any major projects that are within this primary, prime commercial agriculture area that we also have the opportunity to talk about how we are impacted. As I take back to my seat, I ask that the farmers behind me stand to be recognized to show our support for the community of Cleveland County.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, United. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and I'm going to call on Brian Epley, the county manager, to present that.
Mr. President, members of the board, fairly concise consent agenda for consideration this evening. Direct you to your packets for item A, which are the minutes from your September 21st, 2021 Regular Commissioner Meeting. Item B, you'll find your monthly managers' report, which has your lateral budget transfers for the last 30 days. Also, a couple of other just operational highlights from that report. Pleased to let you know that we were one of the first counties in the state to submit our finalized audit to the local government commission and continues to demonstrate high performance out of the finance office. Could not be more proud of that team. Also, just as a general update, the financing for both Shell Building IV and the Health Department DSS co-location are set to come in front of this board in the next 30 to 69, 30 to 60 days respectively. Both projects are moving along at a very appropriate pace. Item C for consideration is Budget Amendment Number 23 on the year. This is from the Sheriff's Office, a request to budget $21,200 from the Department of Public Safety, and that'll be used for evidence storage improvements. Item D for consideration, Budget Amendment Number 24, request from Social Services to budget $287,801. This is similar to the low-income energy assistance program that we typically see in the summer months and winter months to deal with heating and cooling. But this is a new, out of COVID and additional cares money for water that may have been lingering over time with some of the restrictions that landlords and utility providers have fell with, those bills that have been accumulating. Item E is from our legal department, and this is a proposed policy from staff that would provide $2,000 one-time in HSA contributions for full-time employees that are recovered on our health insurance plan that would have been admitted as an inpatient, meaning hospitalized because of COVID symptoms. That $2,000 is directly tied to the deduct on our health insurance plan to help with those economic challenges. And I would point out that this, the timeline associated with this policy would naturally and organically expire either June 30th, 2022, or at the time that the Commissioners retracted our declaration of emergency, which was originally enacted in March of 2020, so it's whichever of those dates come first. Item F is from the Planning Department, a request to set a public hearing for case 21-26. This would be to rezone parcel 16361, which is located at 955 Stony Point Road, and the request is to rezone from restricted residential to residential. That'll go to the Planning Board this month. Again, we're requesting a set of public hearing for your next meeting, January the 18th, 2022. Item G is from our Health Department, is a renewal of their financial eligibility and collection policy. This is part of their annual accreditation process. This policy comes to, in front of the Board of Commissioners annually with technical changes. The changes that are being proposed tonight are in your packet, none of which are material, primarily wording and definition changes, and we're asking that that, those changes be approved by the board. Item H, also from our legal department, this is a request to consider an extension to our fair lease with the Cleveland County Fair Association. As you're aware, that lease was originally expired 12/31/21, and we have put together steering committees on both sides, meaning the county government and the Fair Board, to begin working on a more long-term lease, and we hope to have that in place by June 30th of 2022. So we're asking for a six-month extension with the terms and conditions to remain as they are, with the cap, one caveat being that the county is conducting an onsite survey that would carve out a very small portion of that property, not to be included in the lease, so that the county could directly, or lease to Cleveland County Fire Department, which will have a satellite base there and help with some of our Class 10 fire districts out, specifically out on 180. Item I is from our, from TAC, and this is a resolution for consideration that would allow the Transportation Authority of Cleveland County, or TAC, to continue to apply for Integrated Mobility Division Grants to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. As you're all aware, they are the appointed Transportation Authority of Cleveland County and do receive via buy, flow through a lot of the DOT eligibility and aging transportation dollars that come. And this grant would just continue to authorize them from 2023 through 2027 to pursue those, those grand dollars. Item J, from Human Resources, this is a modification to our Personnel Advisory Committee. One of our members that was serving has taken another job in Gaston County, therefore needing to be removed from that roster, and we're recommending adding Carver Hopper, who is an employee at the La Grande Center, to be their replacement. And finally, for consideration, and in your packet, item K is the 2022 Commissioners Meeting schedule. You can certainly review that there at your desk, and I'm happy to answer questions about that or anything else on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion about anything on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Epley. Going to have a public hearing now. After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the Chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the Chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal will be limited to no more than three minutes. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Planning Director Chris Martin, who will present Planning Department Case 2127, request to rezone property at 1127 Oak Grove Road from manufactured home parks to light industrial.
Thank you, Board. Got a request to rezone property. The petitioner is the planning staff. The property that we're requesting to be rezoned is, as the Chairman stated, 1127 Oak Grove Road. We're asking that it be rezoned from the manufactured home park zoning district to light industrial. This site is about three acres, and it's located near the intersection of Oak Grove Road and Stony Point. There's currently, and it's county-owned property, and we currently have a collection site that's on this property, and it's a pretty busy site, and there's currently some work being done on this property that will help improve the safety, both the safety and the flow of traffic through the property. The property was active with this use prior to zoning, which makes it a non-conforming use. And with the work involved and with plans that we, you know, that we see with some of the other sites, it's, it got staff wondering if we should look at rezoning some of these properties that the county owns for the fact that, you know, it would help us eliminate any, any discussion that would come up with what you can and can't do with a non-conforming use. Every situation would be unique, and with this one, what we saw is we felt like the placement of this one, that it would possibly meet all the criteria that would, that you would consider when you're making decisions to rezon property. So that's kind of the background of why we're here, asking for this property to be rezoned. The, this area, as you know, is a busy area. Both Stony Point Road and Oak Grove Road are heavily traveled roads in the county. That's a highly-used site. The area around that is mixed use. You'll find residential uses, some, some commercial uses around the intersection. And then you'll also see some mixed zoning districts. You can see the map that I have on the overhead. It's got different colors. The white and the orange are both residential-type districts, while the pink and the red are business-type districts. This, this property, or this request for the zoning district, staff thinks that it is consistent with both the 2005 Land Use Plan and the draft 2021 Land Use Plan. The location of this property places it in future commercial in the '05 plan, and it places it in that yellow band that you see on the draft plan that's intended for more intense uses. We presented this case to the Planning Board. They agreed that it fit and was consistent with both the land use plans and that they, that the intended use would remain the same. They voted to unanimously approve the project. They had one suggestion, and that was to consider rezoning the strip of land the county also owns adjacent to this property, but they did vote to approve this request.
Okay. Any, any questions for Chris?
Can you show us where that strip of land is, just out of curiosity?
Yeah. So on the aerial, it's basically the driveway that leads back into the site. It's parceled out differently. The county acquired that property at a later date.
Any, any discussion before we open the public hearing?
Do we need to, I mean, should that be done like that? What's your thoughts on that?
It's not necessary. I think it's certainly something that we could consider. But for the, to bring the use of the property into compliance with current COVID, it wouldn't be necessary to rezon that property. And if, you know, if the Board desired to at a later date, we would have to go through the same process by setting a public hearing date and advertising that strip of land.
So we can't do it? We just can't add it on tonight?
Right. You couldn't add it on tonight because the way we've ran the ads, we only advertise this, this one parcel number.
Okay. At this time then, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2127, request to rezon property at 1127 Oak Grove Road from manufacturing home parks to light industrial, please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2127, request to rezon property at 1127 Oak Grove Road from manufactured home parks to light industrial, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners if they have any more questions or discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. So I don't know if it necessarily deserves an answer tonight, but at some point, I'm not sure, I'm confused on why we're piecemealing this, why we wouldn't do both of them at the same time.
So if it's a parcel?
Yeah, because you can't get to the, you can't get to the convenience site without the other parcels. So one piece complements the other piece, so it seems like redundancy of work to do it twice.
It's, it's a good question, and simply, it's an oversight by staff. We were looking at the site that the, we were looking at the parcel that the activity was actually taking place on, which is the, the main parcel that you'd want to make a decision on. But, you know, I think it's definitely the desire of the Board. If the Board wishes to have both parcels zoned the same, we can certainly go through that process.
That was my point. My point is you can't get to the site to do your activity unless you use the other site. So both of them are for the same purpose. So I have no problem making a motion to approve this, but I'd also like to add to that motion that we bring the other site back as soon as possible for the same zoning class.
I'll second that.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. Carrie's. Okay, and now we'll move to our regular agenda. Land use plan, we'll call Chris Martin, Planning Director, back.
I'll remind the Board on the last item too, that we'll be bringing more collection sites back to you as well. All right, so our next item is the land use plan. You've heard a lot about it the past couple of years. This, you know, I'm glad, extremely glad as a planning staff member to be here presenting this. This has been close to two years we've been working on it. This is a project that we're, we're proud of. There's been a lot of work, both on leadership level and, you know, a lot of work coming from our citizens and our steering committees that have come together to create this plan, and we really feel that this is going to help drive Cleveland County and give us guidance going into the future. Before I get too much further, I'd like to introduce to you Jason Epley with Benchmark Planning. They've been our consultant through our process and very helpful, and they're the experts. And what I want to do tonight is, we've got, we've got about 20 slides, and we'll run through those. And what I want to do is basically introduce to, or give you the first few slides and give you the introduction and background about what a land use plan is and how to use it. And then I'll then turn it over to our consultant, Jason Epley, and he'll give you the details of this draft plan. You hear us use these terms a lot, land use plans and ordinances. You know, what do they mean? And what, what are they, and how do we use them? And what, what are they and how do we use them? A land use plan is mandated by the state, and it's meant to serve as a guide for counties and towns when making land use decisions. You hear us talk about development ordinances and zoning districts and codes. Those are basically your law. Those are your tools. How they're related is that typically, when you, when you're deciding on zoning districts in areas of the county or policy, you're going to look at your land use plan to get that vision, to see what your plan describes that area as being. Land use plans are typically, they should be adopted after careful consideration and lots of public input. And they're meant to basically be the vision that has been approved and described by your citizens. Cleveland County, we've had, we've had two land use plans. Our first was in 1995. And one of the major themes that came from it was county-wide zoning. The county adopted county-wide zoning back in 2000. That was a major result from that plan. And then in 2005, we, we approved our second plan. And what, you know, one of the major themes and results from that plan was the creation of a rural residential district, or the suggested creation. And then also that it identified a lot of industrial sites throughout the county, which was very useful in, within that upcoming recession when the county started beginning to put a lot of emphasis on industrial sites. Now, what you've got in front of you tonight is this draft plan, the 2021 plan. And what you're going to see in it, you know, the major themes in it are going to be that it's really targeting growth areas. It's basically acknowledging that, you know, hey, we, we like our rural character. We, we acknowledge that there's a lot of development coming to Cleveland County. Let's be smart about it and put it where it all belongs. The 2021 plan also encourages a rural residential zoning district. I think both these plans, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the, the input that we've received in both of these plans was that our citizens like that rural character. So we've seen, you know, we've seen a lot of changes since 2005, which is the reason we've decided, or that the board has decided that we needed a new plan. A lot of the changes you'll notice since '05 is that there were proposed lakes in Cleveland County in 2005. And that, and those things really drove a lot of decisions and a lot of policy, a lot of land use policy at that time. We had a recession in 2008, and that really impacted priorities, land use priorities as far as commercial development, industrial development. And it slowed housing. We, we all know what that did to the housing market. From the '08 recession, you know, our citizens' lives changed. There, there, a lot of them changed where they worked, where they lived, where they were traveling to every day. We began emphasizing industrial development in 2000, or during that recession. And then more recently, we've seen an increase in residential development over the last couple of years in Cleveland County. And we're actually seeing on the ground the new bypass being built. So two years ago, back in 2019, the board recognized these changes and asked planning staff to begin creating a new plan. And at that time, we contracted with Benchmark Planning. And now I'll turn it over to Jason. He can give us some details about this plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk a little bit about the plan and answer questions as well. Just to give you a little bit of idea of what's in the plan, the first section, the way it's organized, is the introduction, gets into a lot of the background research and public process, guiding principles in number two. I'll talk a little bit about each one of these. The county future land use in chapter three. And then chapter four is the town future land use. As you know, the county provides planning service for these communities, and we've prepared future land use maps and parts of the plan for those communities as well. Just to give you a little bit of background, the plan kicked off in March of 2020. Over the course of the project, we worked with the steering committee. We met eight times with the steering committee during that process. We also held stakeholder listening sessions where we wanted to get some background input from experts in particular areas of interest, utilities, real estate, schools, et cetera. We also completed a, had a survey open for a little bit over a month. We had 731 responses, which we're, you know, really pleased with the responses from that survey. We also had a project website that had, you know, a little bit over 900 views of that that were unique. We also had social media updates throughout the project. And of course, we mentioned the background research as well. There were about eight public input opportunities. We had, held a kickoff meeting in September of 2020, followed by discussion panels in April, May of 2021 that focused on economic development, agricultural, natural resources, and community initiatives. And then we also held drop-in meetings for the draft plan once it was prepared in each of those four locations to, you know, provide a little bit more opportunity for folks to come out, look at the, look at the proposals and ask questions. The key planning themes that emerged during the process, there were 10. Should be no surprises up there. Rural lifestyle came up time and time again, the importance of the agricultural heritage in the community, the importance of the Shelby bypass and the influence that will have on growth, the need and also the desire to have more trails, greenways, and recreational opportunities throughout the county. Tourism is a growing industry. Housing, as you know, is a very important topic playing for the future. How do we attract young residents came up quite a bit during the process. Partnerships between the county and the municipalities was something that was recognized throughout the process as well. And your location, you know, in the middle of three large metro areas, Charlotte, Asheville, Spartanburg, you know, great location from that standpoint, but also because of the unique assets that you have here in Cleveland County. Economic development being very important, important to think about. You've done really well with manufacturing, but also looking at how can you diversify your economic base moving into the future. And then finally, as Chris had pointed out, looking at priority growth areas. Where should the county invest its resources in focusing growth? So all of those themes and the background research led to guiding principles which formed the vision for the plan. And those four guiding principles include embracing our rural heritage, facilitating sustainable economic growth, not just growth for the sake of growth, but sustainable growth, ensuring an ample and diverse supply of housing, and strengthening governmental coordination. So those were the four big guiding principles that formed the vision of the plan. And then moving to the future land use map, the guiding principles and the vision was used as we looked and evaluated natural resources, transportation, infrastructure, land use. We looked at all these different factors, working with the steering committee to develop the future land use map, which is here, which includes the rural preservation area, secondary growth area, primary growth area, which is obviously around the bypass area, and an airport compatibility. And Chris covered this a little bit, but just to, you know, reiterate, in 2005, that map mostly focused on grouping similar uses, did not really recognize the bypass. You had the additional lakes, and there were six different land use categories. In 2021, the proposal is before you that we worked on with the committee. Similar intensities are grouped together. It's not necessarily use-focused, it's more of the intensity of the use. Bypass is recognized in this plan. It's four different land use areas, provide a little bit more flexibility. And then we focused on some target growth areas, as you'll see in the orange, or some, however you view that color. It's kind of hard to tell. The rural preservation area is intended to protect agricultural lands, natural resources, and scenic views. This is areas mostly forest land, but also has agricultural as part of these areas as well. Sparish residential development, you know, looking forward to see rural home occupations out in this area, crossroads, communities. So in other words, that, some crossroads, major crossroads is where you expect to see some small convenience-type uses and a little more intense development. And you don't want to see a lot of low, high-density uses out in these areas. It puts a strain on your resources and, you know, create, you know, issues with fighting fires and EMS service, all those types of things. So you don't want to see a lot of, you know, high-density uses out in the rural preservation. You want to see low density. So the concept is these low-density areas out in the rural preservation area. And then moving in to the secondary growth area, you would continue to see agricultural uses in this area as well, but you may start to see some more subdivision development as you get outside of the primary growth area. You could see more commercial uses encouraged at crossroads to support the agricultural community and support any new subdivisions that might be in that area. But the idea is to continue a low-density development pattern, but not as low-density as out in the rural preservation area. And if you do have industrial uses in this area, it would be encouraged to be in a park versus just a sprawling complex out in this, this area. The primary growth area, this is where you're going to see the most intense development. It's at least where we expect to see it. This is where you have access to utilities to support more intensive growth. Definitely, you know, firefighting capacities are much better in this area for more intense development, multifamily-type uses. You would expect to see smaller lots in this area as well. So once again, it should be no surprise. This is really where your impact, more intense growth should occur over the next five to 10 years. Airport compatibility, this is really important because this is an area where you don't want to encourage large congregations of people. Certainly, there's higher risk for, you know, loss of life and damage to property if there were to be some sort of accident, you know, related to the airport. So it's really important in this area not to be concerned just about height and noise, but also the uses on the ground. And I think Chris is going to talk a little bit here.
Yeah, I think it's important for the board to know and be aware of that through this process, we've had, I think, eight steering committee meetings, seven or eight public input meetings, opportunities for the public. But there's, and you've heard tonight from members of the ag community, there, you know, one of the emerging topics was basically this land use map, and specifically the boundaries of the rural preservation area. It was, it was discussed thoroughly at the planning board meeting and our steering committee, both. And, and both of those committees approved the plan, the draft, as you see. But we, you know, staff, after hearing all the discussion and, and listening to the boards, we wanted you to, you know, first of all, be aware that that was an emerging topic and also that you were, to make you aware that you have some options. What staff has done is we've created a, a second land use map that would show some additional areas that, that staff also, you know, we feel like those areas would be compatible with that rural preservation area. The draft map is on the left. The option with some additions is on the right. And this area basically adds some area south of the town of Longdale, down to the Double Shoals Road area. It grabs some area that's west of the town of Kingston and then grabs some area that's on the eastern side of the county, between Foston and Waco. Staff feels like both of these versions could be justified. You know, this, this area between Shelby and Longdale, you know, it's a, it's, it's prime farmland. It's, it's good soil, it's relatively flat property. But it's also near the biggest town and near the bypass. So this is the area of our county that you're going to see a lot of opinions about what the future use could be. We do feel like both of these maps could be justified. And I, I do feel that, you know, after hearing all the discussion between the steering committee and the planning board, that they would be comfortable with either one as well.
I'll turn it back over to Jason. Just to kind of wrap up the summary of the plan, there are 27 supporting recommendations as part of the future land use plan and map consideration. Coordination and cooperation is something that's stressed throughout the recommendations, this process, where you have these partnerships with municipalities to provide planning services, but also the many opportunities to partner with Kings Mountain, Shelby, and other communities as well. So it's important to keep that going. Housing, you know, it's talking about new housing product, but also ways to improve your existing housing stock and housing conditions. Agriculture and farmland preservation, there are several supporting recommendations regarding working with Soil and Water Conservation District, which also includes having them help review plans in the rural preservation areas. Certainly, that could be expanded. Several recommendations regarding establishing new recreational opportunities with rails-to-trails, greenways, and blueways. Economic development, certainly you want to encourage reuse of existing sites wherever possible, but there also may be new sites. And broadband is a critical issue. It's not just a rural issue, it's an issue for the cities as well. Tourism and historic preservation, several recommendations regarding that topic. And then just the general use of the plan. Making sure that, over time, that you evaluate the plan, update it. Not something that you want to put on a shelf. It's something you want to look at regularly as part of your, you know, your budget retreats, potentially, strategic planning retreats. You know, working with the planning board or other important agencies throughout the county. It's important to think about this plan and revisit it, at least on an annual basis, to look at the map, look at the recommendations, make sure that the plan is still tracking with your goals and objectives for how to move the county forward. And then finally, the town, future land use maps, just to mention those briefly. We did prepare future land use maps for Bellwood, Earl, Grover, Longdale, and Morrisburg. That wasn't something that we were necessarily contracted for. We just felt we should do that as part of the overall county plan. And I'll turn it back over to Chris.
And the town, you know, once adopted, the towns will own their own land use plan. So if they wanted to make any adjustments or changes in the future, that would be a town decision with those plans. So finally, wrapping this project up, the steering committee approved the draft back in September. And then the planning board, we presented it to them at their October meeting, and they recommended approval. So here we are tonight, the presentation, and what staff is requesting is approval of the plan. And you've got a couple of options. We felt like it would be simpler if we looked at the plan in two parts. Part one being the map, you know, making a decision on the map. And then part two would be making a decision on the text of the plan. So with the map, you would basically have two options. You've got option A, which is what was in the, what is in the draft. And then you've got option B, which is the, the map showing some, some added areas to that rural preservation area. So your options would be to approve A, approve B, deny the map, or approve with any additional modifications that the board desires.
Are you going to start with the map or we're going to the text?
I think we can, yeah, we can, we can tackle the map.
So any questions? We're going to start with the map, and any questions or discussion about?
I, I like the option B for sure because that recognizes farmland too. I think it goes farther down than just the area in the rural preservation.
One of the things I'd like to talk about a little bit is the fact that this is a land use plan. It's a projection of what we think is going to happen. Nobody's got a crystal ball to know.
Right.
This is not a zoning change, so we don't have to have public hearings or anything like that. This is just to do a land use plan to, so that we can sort of see which, what we're going to. going in the future, correct?
That's correct. That's a good point, Commissioner Westine. You know, as we said before, the plan is basically our vision. We're required by the state to have a vision when we're making decisions on the law. The law is your zoning districts and your zoning map. Those are two separate tools, but they're to be used together. But the land use plan is your vision. You should look, you should look to it for guidance when you're making decisions on your zoning districts.
So the difference in B would be that we do have more of a rural preservation farther down than secondary grade, basically, but it could change regardless, is what you're saying.
That's correct. And, and adoption of a land use map does not impact the current zoning districts. Those would remain the same. It, you know, it ultimately would be up to the landowners to decide how they want their areas zoned and come to you and, and request that. But when considering those requests at that point, then you can look at your land use map to give you an idea of what that vision was for the area.
And I, am I correct in assuming that where we're talking about, there are currently farmland, farms being used in that, the extra areas, right?
Yes, there, there is.
That's prime, prime farmland, pretty much?
Yes, I would consider that good farmland.
So even though we cannot control if something happens and somebody inherits that land and sells it to somebody else or whatnot, we can still recognize that that's what is there at this time?
Uh, yes.
That's our vision for the area.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve option B.
Okay. I'll say.
And a second. Motion and a second for option B. Y'all in favor? Okay. Then we need to consider the text.
So next would be the text, which is basically the description of those four areas and then also the supporting documents that Mr. Epley ran through. And you've got some options. Your first is, of course, to approve. The second is deny, to deny. And the third would be to approve with any modifications that the board desires. And I can answer any questions?
So I have a process question. So when you say the text, that's, that's not the documents that you provided. The documents you provided will not be in concert with the map that we just approved.
It's, it's one document.
But the description is going to be different.
The boundary of the map would change. Yeah, your decision tonight was to change the boundary of the map, which you would find in the document that you have in front of you.
That's what my point is, but the point of the document is the current map, A, not B.
So the text is, and if I understand it right, the, the text is what, what each of those four areas, you know, what the goals of those areas are.
So it describes the, the, the areas and their intent and not necessarily the boundary?
Exactly. It doesn't describe them.
Guys wanted to make sure we weren't approving something that was not in concert with the map.
Right. No, you're exactly right. The text describes what the vision is for those areas. The map describes the boundaries of those areas.
That's what I read it to be, I just wanted to verify that.
Thank you.
On page 74, it says that we would, we would engage the Soil and Water Conservation District staff in the review of major projects in the rural preservation area. So it seems that we, you know, we're trying to cover all our bases and get all the input before we make major decisions such as that. And I, I think that's a good thing. Do we have any more discussion? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the text.
Can we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. So all in favor? Thank you, Chris. That's several years' worth of work. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to recognize Attorney Elliot Armstrong to present the decriminalization of certain ordinances.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ward, for having me here. So I've been working with, with Martha and Tim on updating the county ordinances in response to some changes in Raleigh. And I'm just going to run you through quickly what kind of changes we've seen and what updates we are recommending to make to the code of ordinances in response to those. One big point I would make is that what we're talking about tonight is criminalization in the ordinances. This is not something that comes up very much. The county does not have a track record of criminally enforcing ordinances very, very often. This is a change that all, every local government across the state is making in their code of ordinances in response to a change that has happened in Raleigh. So, um, so that's, so we are updating our ordinances in response to a change in Raleigh as to when governments can provide for criminal penalties for violation of an ordinance. So for example, Cleveland County has an ordinance that says you can't sleep in the, on county property overnight, right? Stuff like that. And we're going to talk about why we're doing it and then I'll get into what the actual updates are. So this is in response to a change in state law. And in response to that law, we need to maintain criminal penalties as a tool for ordinance enforcement if and when they are needed. Um, and I think I'm now belaboring my point, but just I wanted to make clear, we are not making changes because we think that the county is about to ramp up criminal enforcement ordinances. This is something that's happening across the state in, in various local governments. So I'm going to use a couple of terms tonight. I think you guys probably know these terms already, but just to clarify, I'm going to talk about a session law and, and the guy behind me knows a lot more about this than I do, but the, a, a session law is what the General Assembly enacts. A statute is what is modified by session laws. So a given session law will modify, like, sometimes hundreds of statutes, right? And so a single session law can modify numerous, numerous different statutes. So this session law was session law 2021-138. It was enacted this past September with an effective date of December 1st. And before this session law was in place, county ordinances were presumptively punishable as a misdemeanor. So if, if there's an ordinance in place and you violate it, you can be punished with a class three misdemeanor, which is, which is serious. I mean, it's not a felony, like you're not going to prison for the rest of your life, but it, but it's serious. I mean, to get charged with a misdemeanor. That's, that was the case before the new session law. So what's happened since then is that there was another session law in 2018. That's why it's 2018-69. Basically, counties across the state got a letter and said, send to Raleigh a list of every single ordinance that you have that could possibly be enforced criminally. And so back in November of 2018, staff put together a list of all the ordinances, sent them to Raleigh. Every other local government in the state did the exact same thing. And in Raleigh, they researched criminal laws across the state. And they apparently didn't like what they found. They thought that some counties were criminalizing things they shouldn't. I don't think Cleveland County is the target, uh, local government for this law. I think they're looking more at more urban local governments who really like to regulate the minutia of daily conduct. That being said, it still applies to us. So the, so after they did this study of criminal ordinances across the state and they saw that some local governments were criminalizing stuff that they didn't like, they passed this new session law, 2021-138, that amended two statutes. So they passed the session law, it amended two statutes, and here's what they are. First, it amended 153A, and if you're an attorney who does local government law, if you see 153A, that's counties. Everything county is in 153A. And instead of saying that every ordinance is presumptively criminal, it says the ordinance can only be enforced by misdemeanor if you specifically say it could be enforced by a misdemeanor. And then they also say that if you want to enact a new criminal penalty, you have to read the ordinance at two separate meetings. So the point being, they're trying to make it a higher bar so that not just everything and every ordinance across the state is punishable as a misdemeanor, which actually kind of makes sense when you think about it. Because, for example, what if you drive into, you know, let's say you drive into Pender County and you don't know all the ordinances of Pender County and suddenly you do something and you're getting slapped with a misdemeanor? You know, I mean, that could, so that's sort of what they're, not to pick on Pender County, I have no idea what their ordinances are. So the first change was just saying it's not presumptively criminal anymore. The second change, I probably shouldn't have put this much text on a slide, but basically saying that counties are not at all ever allowed to criminalize certain things. And this is the list. So regulating and licensing businesses and trades, can't criminalize that. Mobile homes, stream clearing, clearing programs. And behind the scenes, what probably happened is they looked at some counties around the state and they saw, y'all have ridiculous penalties for trees, you know? And so they said, we're going to take away your power to do that. You shouldn't be going to jail because you did something a county doesn't like about trees. So, so that is no longer presumptively criminal. You have to say it's criminal and you can't criminalize any of these things. Is that clear? I think I can move him. Okay. I had a judge once tell me, like, I talk way too fast, and I know I talk way too fast. So I try to slow down a little bit. So that was the 153A statute that was amended. The other one that was amended was in 14-4. And again, if you're an attorney and you see 14, you know criminal law. 153A is counties, 14 is criminal law. Says that a person may not be found guilty of a local ordinance punishable by criminal penalty if they don't violate it again within 30 days and then, or if they show a good faith effort that they're seeking assistance to address underlying factors related to unemployment, homelessness, mental health. How that might come up in Cleveland County, example, we have a camping ordinance that says you're not supposed to sleep overnight on county property. You know, I, I'm not, I've never heard of the county trying to criminally enforce that. But in theory, if the county did, and then the person said, oh no, I'm doing it because I'm homeless and I'm trying to remedy my homelessness, then you couldn't charge them criminally. That's what that would look like. Again, probably going to come up more in more urban areas, but we're still subject to the same laws as other counties, so. So that's the changes that the General Assembly made. So what we have proposed, that we're working through and you've been presented with tonight, is a draft ordinance aiming to maintain the status quo that existed prior to the new law. And what that looks like, because again, you're seeing this update and a lot of local governments across the state, is adding into various ordinances, a violation of this section is punishable as a misdemeanor. That's just to maintain the status quo that existed before the session law was enacted, right? And so probably the one that may come to mind is animal services, because there's been some discussion about that it wasn't criminal and then we made it criminal. So we've gone through and made sure that every piece of animal services is punishable criminally if needed. And, and gone through several other sections of the ordinances and added that as well. But that's why when you look at the ordinance, you'll see that language a lot. This, a violation of this section is punishable as a misdemeanor. That's just in response to the General Assembly's presumption that it's not criminal. So what is happening right now is because we're now past December 1st and the new session law is in place, to enact new criminal penalties has to be read twice. So the first reading is now and then the second reading would be at your next meeting where you would be able to vote on the ordinance. I would also add, this may not be the last time you see this across the state, this, you know, the session law was enacted in September and the effective date was December 1st. So the goal was to look at ordinances that we knew, the staff thought probably if something were going to be enforced criminally, I would think like animal abuse, lighting off fireworks on the greenway, stuff like that. Upon further review, there may be other things in the code of ordinances that we find that we say, oh, we need to add that one too. So this may not be the last time you see this, but the goal now is just to immediately have the county's response to the session law. I just talked a lot. You may have questions and I'd be happy to address those. Thank you for listening.
Have any questions for Elliot? So I think we're looking for a, a motion to approve or deny the first reading.
You can do that. I mean, really, it just has to be presented, which has already happened. So not really, I don't know that action is necessarily needed. It's just, I think that by being here, you've seen it, I think it's been read.
Okay. So, so we will have a, the second reading of the ordinance will be done at the January 18th, 2022 Commissioners Meeting. Is that all we need?
No, it, it can be done whenever you want. So.
All right. Thank you, Elliot.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to call on Brian Epley, the county manager, and he's going to present the Justice Center campus architecture and engineer selection.
So thank you again. I know this has been a very full agenda with some really monumental decisions and leadership continuing to be shown by this board, and I just applaud you for that. Certainly, the land use plan was, you know, 15 years old at this point and we hope that this one continues to serve this community well for a long time. This presentation and this, the following decision will be just as monumental and just as impactful. And it, and it's related to selecting a partner that will help us move forward in our pursuit of a centralized Justice Center campus that would include courts, sheriff's administration and a new detention facility. I, I think to get the full scope and the comprehensive perspective of how we've arrived at tonight, we really have to trek back about five years. We've been working on developing a plan and a path forward for some time now. And really, everything ties back to the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan. And five years ago, under your physical sustainability focus area, the board really took a very purposeful measure approach to how we manage our space and our facilities. You know, our, our buildings are simply where we do our, our work, but they are incredibly expensive. Even back then, 200-plus dollars a square foot for commercial administrative space. And jails and courts and specialized buildings certainly cost more. And there really was no guiding document, no guiding plan as to how we were fulfilling those needs. So we commissioned at the board's direction, again, a more intentional measurement process to be very specific and, and, and uniformity in space, meaning, you know, a clerk in one division or department has the same size office as a clerk in another division or department, so that we're, again, maximizing those resources. And then also looking at the structural integrity of how our facilities are being maintained and how they're being planned. And that comprehensive facility plan was something that we just thought, again, was the responsible approach to fiscal management as it relates to buildings and capital. So that plan was ran, commissioned originally in the fall of 2017. And you can see just kind of this incremental approach and really, you know, fairly consistent development as we move through the timeline. One of the, and I know that's kind of small, but I'll just kind, I'll just give you the highlights. The, the, the primary takeaway from that original plan was that our jail system, which as you all know, and we'll talk about briefly, is we have two facilities, one that's on the fourth floor of our courthouse, the other which is down on McBrayer Street, that, that decentralization, that lack of co-location really has created a variety of problems. And those, those really kind of hemorrhaged in that original plan. The next priority was our courthouse, which has been, again, originally built in the early to mid 70s with the civil defense grant. And, and the building structurally has a tremendous amount of integrity, but its lack of adaptability and evolution over time has presented some challenges. So we had space compression issues, building structural design issues, and then capacity issues all related to detention and courts, which ultimately were the top two priorities of that plan. There were a lot of other takeaways on that plan that we reported to this board over time. We've moved departments around, we've bought the American Red Cross building, we've planned the Board of Elections campus. So, you know, the, really, the, the biggest thing that I would say about our master facility plan is that we've used it and it's been a, a good guiding document to make sure that we're making very, you know, informed, long-term decisions. But ultimately, when you look, again, the, the point of these first two slides, we're just to show that incremental progress so that we, when we look back and evaluate our decision-making metrics and our decision trees, we have a lot of confidence that we've done things the right way. Here's, again, just that summary, the top priorities. And so recognizing that that jail analysis was the primary driver for, for moving forward, we, we took an additional step and did a specific jail study and then followed that up with a specific court study. So again, looking at space needs, what's the size of a courtroom, how many do we need? What's the average size of a, of a detention cell? What's the eatery size? Where, where do we do laundry? All of those questions were things that we tried to evaluate, looking at population trends, crime rates, a variety of other key data indicators to give us an analytic of what we wanted to build. Because you don't want to overbuild or underbuild, you want to be planning for the future but being responsible with the resources you have today. So we, we worked through this jail analysis and we recognized we had an aged facility with significantly inadequate configurations as to modern jail configurations as to modern jail code. We also noted that we had tremendous operational inefficiencies with two facilities. There's risk to moving inmates. The fact that our, our largest detention center is not co-located with the court creates transportation needs and cost. And then honestly, we are also operating and have been at a, at a capacity, our total capacity is about 325 right now, rated capacity is about 300 when you segment the populations, juvenile, female, violent, and so forth. And so we, we need to adjust for that, too. And those are the orders of priority, really aligned with risk. Here's just an optic, clearly, of, of the two locations and the capacity and the challenges that creates. And as I mentioned, when you pair all those challenges together, it really creates a, a real operational burden on our, on our, on our budget and on our taxpayers. Here's just a quick optic to show, here's what we spend annually on detention operations, about 7.3 million, when most of our pure counties spend, you know, a tick over five. So that's, that's significantly more, primarily dictated by all of the operational inefficiencies of configuration and lack of co-location. So as we move through it, I just have a couple of slides here to show there were other things about jail population, average daily population, incarceration rates, that stick out, that we didn't just jump in and say, "Let's build another facility." We really wanted to understand, obviously, what drives capacity in a detention facility is the number of arrests, the crime rates, the number of folks that you're having in the house. And there's some things that stuck out to us. We had a significantly higher pre-COVID population than other counties like us, and really, the, the direction from Attorney General Barr last year at the onset of COVID, that dropped everyone's population, kind of released some of that urgency to, to move forward, and allowed us to circle back and study some of our, our data, and we were able to work with state legislators to, to include in this year's budget a public defender's office. We're looking at some bond reform changes and a variety of other things to help manage that population down, so that what we do build will be right-sized, and again, good use of, of fiscal resources. Here's just a couple charts that we looked at as we went through that jail analysis, that, that was trying to explain how our average daily population continues to increase over time, looking all the way back to 2000, up to 2020, almost, I mean, over double the number of people who are in jail. But you compare that to our crime rate, and our crime rate has been consistently declining. And trying to understand what's causing all of those parameters, and we came up with several ideas that we think will make that more sustainable over time, which, again, as it relates to the, the challenge, the, the decision tonight, we want, we feel good about the space recommendation that's included in, in the scope of the project. Here's just a, a, another layer of complexity and sophistication that goes into the consideration when we're deciding who we're going to partner with, with design and architectural engineering of the, of the detention center as the driver of the project, just the fact that the, the standards and the codes are continually evolving, and we have to make sure that we have a partner that, that we're looking down the road and around the corner versus what's here today. So backing up all the way to February of 2021, again, about four and a half years after we originally started down this path, we had developed, staff had developed, two very different options for the Board of Commissioners to consider as it related to jail capacity, configuration, and risk. Number one was a more affordable option that added immediate capacity, and that would be expanding at about $14 million, the facility down on McBrayer Street. Option two was a more long-term, a, a broader approach, that, that's certainly a much higher cost approach, $40 million, that would be to co-locate our jail with our court facility, and, and to put both, you know, combine both facilities. And the board gave direction that, again, we wanted to be thinking in a very future-focused way, and that long-term approach balanced with affordability, obviously, was the direction. And so the outcomes will be to reconfigure a modern facility with adequate capacity, explore ideas for things like public defender's office and bond reform and some other diversion metrics that help manage that population, and then to co-locate with other justice functions so that we have capitalized on those economies of scale. From a courthouse perspective, our current courthouse is just end of life. It's served our community well for a long time. Its biggest strength is its biggest weakness. I, I tell folks that the, the structurally, the building in, in a stage-five hurricane is where you want to be, but when it's, when it comes to manipulating the space, to add courtrooms, reconfigure space, run a, a coax cable, it's a real challenge. And that, as you can imagine, over times, courts are certainly done differently now than they were even 10 years ago, so you can expound upon that as you go further back in time. Very simple things like path of travel, typically, modern courthouses have very designed inefficiently by nature to have a path of travel for judicial officers and, and attorneys, and then another for public, and then another for inmates, so that they never cross paths in the hall. And although that seems inefficient by nature, and it is, from a risk and a security perspective, it's really the standard. So here's just a couple of the really infamous list of, of things that we challenged, that our folks are challenged with every day to run that building and run court operations. So again, back in your work session in February of 2021, same approach as the jail, two options were presented. One was a more short-term option, one was a little bit longer term, certainly with the price tag being the differential there, too, 12 million in renovations that would have added a courtroom or two and some jury assembly, versus a completely redesigned, leveraging technology, adequate space, long-term approach, about 45 million for a new courthouse. So the direction from the Board of Commissioners, which I think was visionary, was to, to try to design a consolidated campus. So we've got about 8.3 acres. We have recently acquired the former Shelby Star Building here, and this entire campus is about 8.3 acres. So the first step after the board gave direction that the goal was a consolidated Justice Center Campus. Staff solicited three independent architectural firms, and we provided our studies. So all the way back to 2016, our facility master plan, the jail study that we did, the court space needs study, we submitted those plans to three independent architectural firms and asked them to give us a conceptual layout, because the first question was very simple. Will this, will these spaces fit on this property? And in the absence of them aligning and fitting, really, there's, there's, we're back to square one as it relates to developing this campus. We did not give direction on how the buildings would sit, whether they would be one building, or three buildings, or four buildings. We simply said, "We know that we need about, you know, 100,000 square feet, 450 beds, for a detention center, about 35,000 square, 35,000 square feet for a sheriff's administration, and then about 100,000 to 110,000 square feet for a courthouse. How would you lay it out?" Of those three solicitations, we received two back, and our, the staff groomed through those, and the conceptual layout to be considered is in front of you here with the detention facility, the sheriff's office, and a new courthouse. The current courthouse would be about right here. This would be the Shelby Star. And obviously, this is conceptual, these can be moved, but it answered the first question of, will it fit and will it work? And following this, we shared with, with, we issued an RFQ for architectural and engineering design back in, in mid-October, late, early November, and, and have gone through that process at a staff level over the last couple of weeks, and, and had several proposals from those firms come in. And we narrowed that down to the top three that I briefly want to present to the Board of Commissioners tonight. Now, recognize that we had more submittals, but we felt as staff, these were the top three. The first was DLR Group. DLR Group is most prominently headquartered in Washington DC, a national-level firm, with a tremendous amount of experience in these types of campus designs, courthouses specifically, but also detention and sheriff's design. Ceiling Group is a little bit smaller firm, but still works in the southeastern part of the United States, principal partner from Orlando, Florida, but, but with a, a Charlotte bolt-on firm for this project. And then Mosley Architects, which are corporately headquartered in Charlotte, but work in North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, predominantly a North Carolina firm. DLR was involved in the 2016, 2017 Facility Master Plan. Mosley was involved in our specific jail and court study. So two out of the three, we'd already had existing relationships with, and Ceiling was, was a firm that we were very comfortable with and very familiar with. So as we start evaluating these three firms, the first thing that we looked at was, what are their team makeups? So for the DLR Group, and I know that's a little bit hard to see, but you can, as you look at the screen, you can see most of the design, both architectural and the, the engineering, mechanical and structural and electrical, most of that can be done in-house. Really, the only things that this group was, was talking about subbing out was cost estimates, landscape, civil engineering. And we saw that as a real value add, because it helps control the timeline when you have a project of this size that we're, you know, is, is probably going to be in that 100 to 110 million dollar range, and take 30 to 36 months. You need consistency, you, what do you, how do you manage staff turnover, deadlines, supply chain management, construction management, all those type things. Ceiling Architects, again, a smaller firm, and as you can see, I think that's demonstrated in, in a little bit of the need to sub some of those functions out and have a little bit of diversity amongst the team. One thing that was different about Ceiling as well, instead of having one central design, Ceiling primarily focused on the court and law enforcement side, and they were going to include a firm from Charlotte, Hemp Hill Randall, to work on the jail. Hemp Hill Randall recently designed the Burke County jail, so they do have experience in North Carolina in jail, but Ceiling felt most comfortable with that modification. Mosley, again, very similar to DLR, you can see, was able to accomplish most of those functions in-house. And so from, from this analysis, we, I guess garnered the highest level of comfort with DLR and with Mosley. The second kind of macro, broad level that we looked at is, what is their specific experience in this realm of public safety projects? And as you can see, and you would expect with our top three finalists, all three had robust and ample experience with projects of this size and larger, really, really nationally. DLR, over 700 detention projects, 100-plus court and law enforcement. Ceiling, a little bit less, but still, still ample and robust. And, and Mosley, as you can see here, about 250 projects submitted that qualify. So we took a deeper dive there and asked, well, if jail is the driver of our project, and really what spurred the urgency to move forward, what are each of these three submittals experienced specifically in jail construction? And if we take it a step further, what is the specific experience in North Carolina? One of the things that we added to the equation was just the change in North Carolina jail code over the last four or five years, and, and, and trying to have a good pulse on what may be coming over the next five years. When we evaluated DLR, again, a tremendous amount of jail design and construction management experience, but not as much in North Carolina. Ceiling, even less experience, with Burke County being the most recent over the last five years in North Carolina. And again, Hemp Hill would have been that partner. One of the concerns we had there is Hemp Hill's firm was a little bit of a smaller, more intimate firm, and, and that presented some inherent risk as it relates to project managers and, and what happens if, you know, maybe there's a, you know, a sickness or illness or something like that with one of the design principles. So not, not maybe as adequate a bench strength as we would see in the other two firms. Mosley presented well, as you can see, tremendous amount of recent North Carolina-based jail design and experience. So in this analysis, the conclusion was, we felt Mosley was the most prepared and the most experienced, as we related it here. Court and law enforcement, again, part of the reason that these were our three finalists is all three were exceptional. I, I would report to the Board of Commissioners that all three firms could, would, would have been adequate partners and would have checked the box, and would have presented and delivered a, a very satisfactory project. And as it relates to court and law enforcement, as you can see with some of the, the, the projects that we have here listed, just, just an enormous amount of professional experience amongst all three. So those, along with another quantifying scoring sheet that we went through at the staff level, that really highlighted specifically what we were asking for in the RFQ, and what each group presented to us, we, we went through and graded each firm. And we gave DLR a B minus. Strong firm, tremendous amount of experience, professionalism. All the reference checks across all three firms were, were very positive, by the way. Ceiling, or DLR, we, we, we gave a B minus, simply because of their jail experience, and more specifically, jail experience in North Carolina. Ceiling was very similar. We gave it a B, same reasons as DLR, and the downgraded grade, even though just slightly, was because we saw inherent risk with a, again, a lack of bench, bench strength with the Hemp Hill, just, again, a smaller firm, two principal architects, and that was a little bit of risk that we were trying to avoid. And we, we gave Mosley Architects an A, and that was, again, I don't mean to be a broken record, but at every evaluation point that we arrived at, we felt comfortable with the proposal, we felt comfortable with the experience, felt comfortable with the, the vision and, and what was being submitted for consideration. And I'm, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions, but I, again, just applaud this board for your vision. I know these aren't easy decisions. This one particularly not an easy decision, but the recommendation for this board is to authorize the manager to negotiate with Mosley Architects on a design, architectural, engineering contract for the Justice Center Campus across the street.
Mr.'s comments, questions?
With sitting on the committee that interviewed these architects, I applaud the work that y'all have done beside the scenes, evaluating all that. But just from sitting in on the meetings, I feel like that you've made the right choice.
May I add one other point that I just simply forgot to mention, and I think it's critically important. Moving forward from tonight, obviously, the biggest component of a project of this size is affordability. And as you are all aware, we did receive a grant from the state legislature of $59 million, and we do feel confident, via sign-off from the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office and our, in our local CPA auditor, that we have confidence that we can supplant the vast majority of our American recovery dollars, which is about 18 million, to this project, which significantly closes the gap and, and answers that affordability analysis. So I think the huge question is, how do you afford something like this? And, and we feel that we're fully funded and ready to go.
Any more comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we use Mosley Architecture Firm.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. Three, three to one. All right. Is there any Commissioners' comments, any announcements, or anything?
Only comment I'd like to do is say, tell everybody Merry Christmas.
On, on this day, we need to, we need to remember to thank a veteran for our freedom, and considering all the farmers are here, you know, always here, if you had three meals today, thank a farmer. So we, we really appreciate all y'all do, and like you know that the county is behind our agriculture community. Nothing else. The next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, December 20th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. in the Commissioners' Chamber, and I would entertain a motion to recess to reconvene.
I think that's a Monday.
Okay. All right, have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? We are dismissed.